Good evening, everybody. It is 7:06. We're ready to get going. Ready for the pledge?
Right in center. Pledge allegiance.
To the life of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty, attendance, James?
Yep. It's a hot mic. Is that better? Okay. We'll try that. All right. President McDonough is absent. Vice President Aldrich?
Here.
And Secretary Summers here. Treasury Whitney is absent. Trustee Gibson?
Here.
Trustee Atchison?
Here.
Trustee Capjorni?
Here.
Outstanding. Thank you, James. Changes to the board agenda. Do we have any?
I'm just suggesting a Government Relations Committee update be added to 6A really quick.
I'll second that.
Do I move to add the Government Relations Committee update to item 6A?
Okay.
And I'll second it.
All right. So from a vote, Shane?
Yes.
Would we say we're good? All in favor?
All in favor?
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Any opposed, eh? Good.
Okay.
All right. Scheduled public comment. Do we have any? Off and running? Okay. And then the consent agenda. Have anybody to approve the consent agenda? James?
Yeah. Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support. Shane, thank you. The superintendent report, Dr. Milligan?
Oh, hold on. We got it. All in favor?
Oh. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Super. Now we're on to number five. Superintendent Report, Dr. Milligan?
All right. Good evening, everyone. I have some highlights as well as a couple of presentations from my colleagues. First and foremost, I want to make sure that we are grounding our conversation, as always, in our strategic plan. Says that it's on. Hey, look at that. Empowering learners, building community, and inspiring futures. Just a second. And our vision and mission, that keep us centered on what matters most, which is creating safe, supportive spaces where all learners feel a sense of belonging and are prepared for the future. Our values remind us that every choice we make moves us closer to that goal. And with that perspective, I want to share some of the things that have been happening in the district. So some of the highlights I'm going to share, we're going to talk about our successful opening of our new stadium turf, curriculum nights across the district. I'm going to share some specifics about our November 1st Parent Ed Fair. I want to make sure that everybody saves that date. It's going to be fantastic. Our staff appreciation night, we'll talk about that. Future first responders, voting information on the OCS website. So we'll highlight some of those here in just a second. I do want to thank our substitute teachers. It is indeed Substitute Teacher Celebration Week. These are such fabulous individuals. If any of you have ever subbed in a classroom before, it is no small task. You're showing up, the kids don't know you, you are literally just figuring out things. You hope that the lesson plan is going to engage them. You are, it is, it is really an amazing job that they come in and do. So I just want to express our gratitude for our substitute teachers. So, the new turf, it was an amazing opening. Our band performed at halftime. I was able to be up in the press box watching it, and it was just gorgeous. And our band did an amazing job. Our football team, our soccer team opened on that Saturday. We had wins across the board. You cannot open a turf any better than that. Of course, we had a ribbon cutting ceremony. I really should not be trusted with those scissors. Those were real scissors. They probably weighed a good 10 pounds, so I had a little bit of fun. I did notice that in that top right-hand picture, I'm kind of pointing those scissors at James, so I'm not really sure what's happening there, but it was not intentional, I promise. But it was such, honestly, everyone was so rejuvenated and excited. The energy that was there was just phenomenal. So again, thank you to the donor who provided this wonderful opportunity. Our kids were just thrilled to pieces. And we won, of course. Absolutely. It was a great game. Curriculum nights, I was able to go to two of our curriculum nights. I was at the high school and I was at Leonard. These are such great opportunities for our families to connect to their child's teacher, get a good understanding of how their student will be learning, what are the expectations, those sorts of things. So here are some things. I would say the number one thing that it enables is that connection between our families and our teachers, which is so critical to students' success. That partnership, right? And so, you know, when we're able to partner, our students benefit. There is a clear line of communication that teachers can connect with parents, parents can connect with teachers, and it just promotes that collaboration that students benefit from, promotes transparency, clarifies expectations, always good to know ahead of time exactly what your child is going to experience in that class, encourages engagement, supports student success, as I mentioned, strengthens communication, and celebrates school community because it really does take a village to educate every single child. It takes us all rowing in the same direction, supporting our students to ensure their success. So both the ones that I went to, and I know my colleagues on the cabinet went to many of the other curriculum nights, the energy was great, the enthusiasm was just really great to see. This is, I was talking to Anita, she's working with her team to get this solidified, our Parent Education Fair on November 1st. I am super excited when she was telling me what was going to be there. I'm like, oh my gosh, that's going to be amazing! Some of the topics, the keynote speaker is the speaker that we had last year that talked about the anxious generation. She was so popular, we actually brought her back for her own session in the spring, and she was amazing. So she's actually going to be our keynote speaker. Other topics that will be covered, accommodations for neurodivergent learners, stress management, nutrition, how to have tough conversations with your child, cybersecurity, monitoring, online and social engagement, those sorts of things. All very, very relevant. We got feedback from our parents to be able to identify things that would be helpful. So get the word out, tell people that this is going to be a great opportunity to really learn how we can support our children most effectively. Staff appreciation night, this Friday aligns with Goal 3, celebrating our staff and supporting our staff. I think we have 135 people who have RSVP'd. They have, thanks to our boosters, they get a meal ticket, so they get a free meal, which is really exciting. And at the beginning, before the game, we're all going to come out, they're all going to come out of the Wildcat, which is going to be super cool, and be celebrated in the middle of the field. So all of our staff are invited. We can still have you RSVP. We do need to make sure our staff RSVP's for the meal ticket, so we can make sure that's provided, but it's a great opportunity to celebrate the amazing things that our staff does across the district. This is an awesome photo. These are our students in the Future First Responders Program. So this is Goal 2, which is increasing pathways for students. Having a chance, so Chief Majestic is all the way on the right-hand side. He cannot say enough positive things about this program. If you talk with him, he will talk about this program, and he just glows. He is so proud of the work of the students, the work of the instructors. Many of them go on to be EMT, so by the time they finish this program, they'll get their EMT license, so they can actually become an EMT. So just an incredible program. Our career pathways at the high school are phenomenal. You rarely see a high school with that many career pathways, and it is, they're very robust, and they lead students on a pathway to successful careers that they're passionate about. You can't get any better than that. So this is, if you ever see Chief Majestic, ask him about this program. He will just talk, talk about it till your ears fall off. We were able to get our webpage up with information. We've been collecting questions. People can submit questions, and we've been responding to those. Some of them take a little bit more research, so they may not be up right away, but we're getting them up pretty quickly. It has the flyer that you see here, as well as additional information. We'll continue to add to this webpage with additional information for the vote in November. And then finally, we have two more additional updates. We have Ms. Stephanie Neme. She's going to be talking about Clear Lake and all the amazing things they're doing at Clear Lake. This aligns with Goal 1 and Goal 2, and those aligned actions there. And then Dr. Williman will be doing her safety update, aligning with Goal 1 and Goal 4. So if Ms. Neme can come up.
All right. Good evening. My name is Stephanie Neme, and I'm the principal here at Clear Lake. We're so excited to have you this evening. And tonight, we are going to share that, just like with the district, their mission and vision, that is also the Clear Lake mission and vision. So we will share how, when we review our 24-25 survey and academic data, how that is connected to our new aligned vision and mission and core values, as well as then, how then do we align our Clear Lake goals to move forward using our data? And then also, of course, our points of pride. So a little bit about us at Clear Lake. We are 410 students, and on some days, we have almost 70 staff here. Everyone plays a role in how they belong in our learning community. And as you can see, we are not just a DK through 5th grade building, but we also house for the district the Emotional Impairment Program. We also house the District ASD Program. And we also have preschool here. We have the GSRP kids. Their first day was actually today, so we added in another group of students and families into our Clear Lake group. So the next few slides are going to be a review of our data. So because we're presenting in September, our data that we're going to share is the data for last school year because we haven't yet either taken those assessments or, you know, sent out those surveys. And then after these slides, it will then show how we're using this data to then create our Clear Lake goals to move us forward for this school year. So again, this data is from last school year, but we're always looking at it to see then, how do we move forward? So we're going to start with the surveys. These are the surveys that went out to our families, asking them, you know, the different questions to give us feedback on different areas. And so as a team, we're looking at this. So this first one is our highest ranking survey results over time. So in this category, you would want to see that the higher percentage, the better, saying that the families are really saying like, these are high-ranking things that they either strongly agree or agree with when it comes to our learning community. So some things just over time, you can see have been up here from the last few years as far as like having families be engaged. And a new one this year that we just wanted to add in is that we are seeing a trend upwards with the school is safe in the safety and behavior category. That is a new one that we have added to this chart to be able to show that our families are now saying, over time, they do feel like that sense of safety here is increasing. And just some of the things you'll see in bold are the things that are mitigating actions that we feel are contributing to that positive response. So things within our PBIS system and the lessons that we're doing with kids, the safety drills and the communication of those drills, just the presence of like our security officer and things like that. We do feel like it has shown a positive increase over the last few years in this survey. Okay? And then on the other side, we kind of call, this is that area, the other side was the glows, and this is the grows. So when we look at this, we want to see that this percentage is getting lower over time. So we would hope that over time, our families are then responding to say that, that instead of saying they either disagree strongly, disagree, or maybe don't know. So they're kind of neutral in that way. They're not sure how to answer. They might mark "don't know." But again, we want parents to know. So that's telling us that if a parent or a family member is responding they don't know about a question, that gives us feedback of how we need to better communicate, and those might go into our mitigating actions then. So some things that we have been really working strong on over the last few years are things like activities, and we're going to talk about that in a few more slides. We just highlighted some of the amazing things they're doing at the high school with career-focused education. Again, that is something in the elementary level that also is aligned with the strategic plan. That's also an area for us, we're getting feedback that we need to continue to grow. And some things that we have also put on there for that specifically is, we actually do offer quite a few learning on location opportunities that is aligned with career-focused education, but what that's telling us is that if a parent answers, you know, 24% are saying they don't know, right? Or they disagree because maybe they don't know which of these learning location, field trips are career-focused connected. We're using that feedback then to take back to our teachers and our teams, to create different reflection forms, and really make sure that our parents have that understanding that when we do these types of activities or field trips, it's actually to really help our students think about different pathways that they might have later on. And so we also added in that discipline is enforced fairly, that over time has gone back and forth, but still is an area that we're really working on. We're asking more questions and looking at, is there a way that maybe we can change, you know, the way that we capture some of this? Because is it a specific area? So again, we're taking that feedback back from our parents, working with our teams to really figure out, you know, how can we best support not just kids, but families as well. We're going to move to our assessment data. This is from the IMSA from the last school year, as well as you can see trends over time. So you can see, you know, for our 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade students that take this, when we are looking at last year's data, because we haven't taken this assessment yet, you can see that we had 43% of our 3rd graders, and this is for our English Language Arts assessment, that 43% were proficient or passing. For our 4th graders, it was 52% of those kids, and in 5th grade, it was 60% of students. So it was also something, I know sometimes you look at numbers and you might, I know when I look at it as a principal, I'm like, oh, only 43% of our students were proficient. But then you also look, and that's what we've included here as well, what percentage in Oakland County and also at the state level for that same assessment for that same grade level, to be able to also help us understand, like, was it just Clear Lake in the 3rd grade last year? Or we can see, well, actually, we're pretty close to Oakland County's average at 47%, and actually, we were above the state average of 39%, right? We could also say our 5th graders really rocked it, 60% of them were proficient compared to Oakland County's average of 54%, and then the state level of only 44%. So we're again, always looking at that, or comparing our data against other district data and state data to also help give us feedback, and we'll look at some local assessment data as well, because this is just one big, kind of big-picture piece of our data collection that we do here in the district, but still an important piece to consider. Like for English Language Arts, we also take IMSA for math for those same grades. Again, you can see for our 3rd graders, 54% proficient, 4th grade, 57% proficient, and our 5th graders at 42% proficient. So when looking at, again, compared to Oakland County and the state, we are right there or above those different data points. Okay. So again, that was a state assessment that we just talked about. We also locally are collecting data. And so this year, being in September, I get to be the first to present out of my elementary colleagues and share about STAR. So STAR is the new assessment that we started last school year. It replaced FastBridge, in which it's used as a screener, and it's used three times a year with our kids. And so because of that, you will see that we only have last year's STAR data, whereas in the past, we might have had multiple years of FastBridge data. This year, because it's only the second year, and that assessment window just opened, the data that you'll see in the next slide, I only have for the building for last school year. But we wanted to share what is STAR because, again, it's new as of last year. So we said it's given three times. It is a computer-based adaptive screener program. It's not really like anything they would ever study for. It is something really that we are just coming in to see at this time of year, fall, winter, spring, where are you within grade level standards? So we can see if you are maybe at risk, you need intervention to help you get to that end of the year standard. Are you right where we want you to be? Are you above? And then we're using that local data to be able to then really drive instruction and think about what we're doing in the classroom. So really, when we talk to parents, when they're like, what is this? How can I help my student? It's really just being encouraging with them to be like, no matter what, right? Always try your best. Because sometimes we know when it comes to the computer, it seems like, oh, I'm just going to click, or maybe I'm not engaged maybe with math or ELA or something like that, but just really the message is we want our students to become comfortable with using a computer-based assessment, and to just always try your best, no matter what. So the other elementary colleagues will also present their STAR data this year. And when you look at ours, again, we haven't yet collected all of it because the window just opened, they may also have more data for you because at that point in the year of presentations, they'd be able to compare this year's to last year's. So overall, what we're looking at is our STAR Early Literacy data. That is only given to our kindergartners and then our, really just kindergartners. If our students in 1st grade start to take the regular STAR assessment and are not able to pass the first few screener questions, it actually then will have them stop because we're not going to be able to collect very good data for them. We then use the Early Literacy assessment then, but you will still see, we do have some students in 1st and 2nd grade that maybe need to have that adapted. So we get to our 1st through 5th grade then, they are now taking just the regular STAR assessment in either English Language Arts or Math. Again, like FastBridge is going to collect where you are at that time of year, and our goal is always, we would like to see, right? More students who are moving out of our red, that orange-yellow intervention area, into our green, and then our blue. Okay? So we always hope that that is the goal. And so what we wanted to highlight is, so when we look at 4th grade, you can see that like at the very beginning of the year, we did have five students who we have in that area that would be coded red, or saying they're really struggling, they need intervention, we need to work with them, as well as students in the orange and the yellow, those are our intervention kids, or we're thinking about within the classroom as well, if many of them are in one classroom, how can we support that classroom? And then you would see over time in the 4th grade, we see that number in each of those intervention colors going down. So again, we want to see those areas decrease, we want to see the green and the blue increase. Okay? Then I wanted to show, so this is our STAR math data for our 1st through 5th graders. Again, like the last slide, we're always hoping to see that that number goes down in the intervention colors. Some years though, so when we look at our 2nd grade cohort, you can see we started off the year where we had like, you know, 18% in the red. We moved to winter and we're like, oh my gosh, this is great, we've been working with this kids, we've gotten it down to 9% of that group. We've reduced also in like that orange and that yellow, so like those intervention groups that we're working with, the things we're doing in the classroom seem to be working. And then we do it in the spring, and you look at like, oh, well, that's not the trend that we typically are looking for, right? So again, we're using that data when that happens to start to problem solve and try to take action, research of, again, what might have been going on? What is the curriculum at that time of year? Are there additional supports through professional learning that maybe we need to contact with like our district coaches and partner with? Is it something that over time, once we have more STAR data, like this always kind of comes back as something we need to look at? So again, that's just the way that we are using our local assessment data all the time. So again, IMSA, one time of year, High Flying, just kind of gives you a broad thing of like how in general compared to grade level peers. Local data though is so important because it's really capturing in a more timely manner, and we're really using it within our classrooms. and we're really using it within our classrooms to think about not just tier one instruction, but also tier two. And if we need to go to a tier three, we would also do that. All right. So we take all of that data, both state and local. We take the survey data that goes out, and then we look at it and say, okay, where can we grow? Where can we improve and make goals? So this school year, I wanted to share that one of our goals does align with both strategic goal one and two. And it's to, how do we continue to have a safe, supportive, and connected learning community? And so when we looked at those things, we're going to really work hard this year on restorative practices within the classroom. That's when we're working on just building community. We want kids to come in and feel like they belong to this classroom. We are working on our Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports, or PBIS system. And this year, we're also going to be partnering with 42 Strong and providing 42 Strong Junior as an additional way to help kids feel a sense of belonging. And it is a peer-to-peer model, so it is a different layer that we haven't yet been able to do. So we're really excited to be able to offer that this school year and really see how that works within our learning communities. And the joke was that I was nervous of going first in September. I normally go in October, and I was worried I wasn't going to have enough pictures, but turns out, I'm still good. So you'll see, we have already had multiple Wildcat Wednesdays that goes with our PBIS system, so we celebrate weekly. We do have our book vending machine that you saw out here outside the cafeteria, and students are earning Wildcat tickets to be recognized for their positive behaviors. Our book vending machine was donated last school year by our PTO, because we partner with them. They're heavily involved in our PBIS system, and they provide a lot of amazing things for our kids to help support those positive behaviors. We also had started last year when I presented as one way we're also looking at attendance, was our PBIS pals. So that's that group you see in the circle. We had already started to connect our grade level groups to foster connections across the building and grades. And again, that's how we're upping the ante this year, is taking that model and then using the 42 Strong Junior curriculum to really then up what is the activities and the things that the kids will be doing when they're with their pals. We also tried something different for the first six days of school, which we called it the Clear Lake First Six Days of School. And it was expected that every classroom do a minimum of two classroom community circle meetings a day. So you could always do more, but it was minimally two. And why a circle? Because that way you can see everyone. Everyone feels included, everyone has a voice, and a large part of being in the circle is also learning and using your communication skills, which also aligns with our goals, right? So our teachers actually started, that's some of the pictures at the top, where they actually got to make their own classroom talking stick for the year. And then every student in their class then initialed it, and then we mod podged, so that will be their classroom talking stick to be able to use when they do their community circle meetings. Our second goal also aligns with the strategic plan, this is goal two and three. This one has to do with the teaching and learning, because we're always trying to help kids be knowledgeable, critical thinkers, and communicators. So we are always looking at our tier one instruction. Like I said, we're using that local data to help us look at what our instruction is. This year, we do have some new curriculum. As we know, we have adopted science curriculum for our K through five. And this year, for third through fifth, we are also using the Core 95 Phonics. So we have both of those things now within our tier one curriculum that our teachers will be using. And then with math, we continue our work with our district math coach, doing what's called building thinking classrooms, which really is again, helping kids be communicators. It's helping them articulate their thinking, how they solve that problem, and work on those collaboration skills within the math setting. And we also added in last school year, professional learning communities for our staff, because again, we know that aligns with our goal of how are we growing our people as well. So that professional learning community structure is for our teachers to continue their practice, to be able to learn from each other, to receive coaching from our district coaches, and to help us plan what kind of professional learning they might need for the school year. And lastly, our last goal is just really embracing the new district mission and vision, and how do we live that out? When we think about, you know, inspiring futures, that comes back to that career-focused education. How can we make that more robust? And also, how can we communicate that? Because we saw that from our survey, right? So again, we're using the survey data this time to share how we're driving that into our goals. We also got feedback from the survey about the learning opportunities that are kind of outside the classroom for our kids. So again, we're trying to look at, within our school day, where are there other times that maybe we can offer some other opportunities? So we are excited, we're in the very early stages of like, how do we try to do like a Clear Lake recess STEM club? So we have some materials, we've just never been able to really figure out how to facilitate it, how to get kids in there regularly. So actually, Mr. Shodrovich, our PE teacher, is going to support that. So again, we're in the early learning, planning phases of that. But we're excited to offer that as something additional to our kids during recess time. We also have added a few more clubs. So we're going to start a theater club this year for our upper L students. Mrs. Adams, our first grade teacher, is going to be the club sponsor for that. And last year, our PTO helped with that too. They came up with a mileage club, and that was at recess. Kids could run laps, and they got little feet trackers to keep on their necklaces. And it was amazing how many kids participated, and because they just want to get out there, and it was so fun to just, we have a lot of space out there, it's great for running. So we are very thankful again for that partnership with the PTO to align with our goals and to support that. All right. Points of pride, there's a lot to be proud of at Clear Lake. Some things that I just want to highlight that would be different from last school year, is that we did have the first annual PTO Clear Lake Scholarship. So we were actually able to participate in the honors night and recognize Rebecca Secord, she was the first recipient. So that was a really exciting thing to be able to come full circle with our Clear Lake kids and engage again in that connected community of even though you have been out of elementary school for a while, we're still connected with you in that way. We also had a great turnout at our summer STEM and Stories, which is our summer engagement that we offer. Again, always trying to provide STEM in align with career-focused education. We also have been really working on our Kindergood Kickstart. We continue to grow those numbers of incoming, either developmental kindergarten or kindergarten kids. So that's an opportunity for them to come in before school starts. They get a tour. This year, we had a raffle, PTO donated spirit wear for them. Anyone who came in also got a book. And they get to meet different staff, because again, we want them to have a sense of belonging right out the gate. So we love how it just continues to grow. And we also recognize our green team, they're in year 19. And last year, they were recognized at the state level of being an evergreen team. So that means that it's the highest level. They are doing at least 20 different amazing things to help our environment throughout the school year. And I guess lastly, is our Eagle Scout project. Again, being connected to that community, just because you've left Clear Lake doesn't mean that, you know, you're just gone. So Ethan is a former Clear Lake student who chose us to be able to do his Eagle Scout project. He completed that over the summer, and it was really exciting to be able to open that up to our kids and provide that to them at recess the first day of school. All right. That is all I have, unless anyone has any questions.
Hey, so Ms. Neme, thank you for the presentation, really appreciate it. Just out of curiosity, the parent survey and stuff on there, what was your turnout as far as the number of people that responded to the survey? We've just kind of been asking everybody to gauge parent involvement and responses and such.
Yeah, so it was actually our lowest turnout that we've had. I'm only going into year four this year, so over the last three years, we've had a pretty good turnout. Last year was only 66 parents. I even looked back to see like, how many separate reminder emails did I send? I know the district was sending them. It was in newsletters. You get the, you got the Clear Lake connector last year, it was in there. But yes, only 66 voices are captured in last year's parent survey compared to the years before, where I believe the year before would have been 110 or 111. We usually hover around in the hundreds. So we also kind of looked at that as something at a district level across the board, we noticed the turnout was lower than normal. So we're also working at a district level to think about, when do we send those out? Maybe it's just that time of year, it was later last year than normal.
Thank you.
In regards to the, the career exploration, are we including the skilled trades?
So there's different career zones for the elementary level. It's not quite what it is for the high school, where they have the Career Technical Education or CTE. So in the elementary level, we focus, it's called Career Focus Education, and they only focus on five zones. Though we do look at advanced manufacturing, so like our fourth graders do go to the River Rouge plant, so they're able to go and see the assembly plant. We've done trips to like IFL to think about advanced engineering from that perspective as well. Trying to think what else, Mrs. Buds, I don't know if she's in here, but you know, we do try to get them out to different places that would meet those different career zones. And as you know, you participated last year with us in our career fair, so we're always looking as well, like, anyone within the community who would like to come out and talk to our fifth graders. And that's another way to capture outside of the five zones. We welcome anyone to be able to come in and connect. That's usually an event that we have in the spring, and we send that out looking for not just Clear Lake parents and guardians, but also within the community, if they'd like to come in and talk about their careers.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Neme. All right, now we have Dr. Williman with a few safety updates.
Good evening. Following the same sheet that we have been working from, and again, you can find this on the Oxford Schools website, under School Safety and Security, there's a yellow box. And within that yellow box is a highlighted link that will take you to this document. So as we progress down the list, tonight, we're going to talk about Zero Eyes, Nightlocks, and our exterior door numbers. So Zero Eyes is an AI-detected, human-verified weapons detection system that's on our various cameras. They will notify us if it is a toy, if it is an actual weapon. And it's connected to our dispatch as well, so it does go to the Oakland County Sheriff's Office. And it is something that we have on all of our campuses in various spots. It is something that, we're not going to get into details of exactly where that is, but just know that it is on all of our campuses, including our newest building, OEIC, where Loft, Bridges, and OVA are at. You can click on the link that's there, it's a hyperlink where it says Zero Eyes, that can take you to learn more about the company if you're interested in doing that. Our next one is our Nightlocks. As you can see, even in this room, I'm going to walk this way, we have our Nightlocks. These are things that from kindergarten all the way through, I'd even say DK, all the way through, they practice putting these in. It's just an additional security measure, so that if students were going to need to lock down in any way, they would be able to engage these in the door. If you notice, as you walk around our buildings, you can see, this is a better view over there, the bottom part, the Nightlock engages in that area. There's a plate at the bottom, and it's something that our campuses all view. And very appreciative to Tim and his team for making sure that there's no gunk in there or as the floors get waxed, that that's all cleared out as well. And within our bathrooms and locker rooms, we also have these, but we've added what's called Nightlock sensors to those. So if you're in a bathroom or a locker room and you were to open that plastic container that I opened up, a sensor would go off, but in a way that is sending push alerts to those of us that have that access. And then the same thing would happen not only when it was opened, but also when it was engaged. Because we want to be able to keep our kids safe, but at the same time, we know that TikTok is a thing. People, if you guys keep up with any of the challenges that have been going on, sometimes there's encouragement to do some not-so-great things. So we want to make sure that we're aware when areas like bathrooms or locker rooms are engaged. And so that's what our Nightlock tools look like, this is one of them. We do have an additional one that, I refer to it as the hugger. I don't know how else to describe it, because it kind of hugs the side. Same idea, but some of our, I know at the high school and some of our gymnasium doors, they're going to have the hugger version of it. In our yellow flip charts that you can find throughout the buildings, there's a visual right here, I can even show you. There is a visual, it doesn't want to come off the wall. That's the map. I'm not going to pull it off, because it won't come off the wall. It didn't work as well as I thought it would, but there's a visual step-by-step process for it too, in case you're a sub or anyone in this room that may not be used to using a Nightlock. If there is a question on it, we don't want you to fumble around. But as I said, our kids do practice this as part of our drills. And then our final tonight is our exterior door numbers. This is how I refer to parts of buildings across the district, so if you ever have a conversation with me and I say, oh, that's door 18, that's the way that it's easier for me to understand the doors. But what, why we do this is really so that people who aren't used to coming to our campuses, if they have to respond, whether it's a medical need or a police issue, it's easy for them to know where to go in the building. It's not easy, I'll use this building as an example. If Stephanie were to call 911 for a medical emergency and she says, oh, it's, it's in the cafeteria, and I've never been to this school, I'm not going to know where to go. But if I can say, you can enter through door one, and people will be waiting to guide you, that is how they're going to know what part of the school to go to. The exterior door numbers start at your main entrance, and then they go clockwise around the building. So it's consistent, so that no matter who is responding, whether they are familiar with our layout, when you think of our SROs, they know our buildings across the district very well. But we can't say that everyone who works out of the Oxford substation spends time in our building the way that our SROs do. And so that way, it's easy, it's easy for fire to respond. And it's just that way that we can partner with our first responders. But it's also a way for me to have conversations where if Kevin Nelms and I are talking about something at the high school, I know door 17 is by the pool. And that's an easy way for us to start that conversation, as opposed to trying to have a conversation and say, oh, it's this classroom. So it helps not only for our first responders that may be coming, but also as we're going around and evaluating different parts of our buildings, that we're able to be and have that consistent language. And again, that's also thank you to Tim and his team for being able to keep those signs up, because I know Michigan weather is what it is. And so it's definitely a team effort to be able to keep those posted in an area where everybody can see. Anyone have any questions about those three items?
Sorry, I'm not trying to be so loud in this microphone, I feel like it echoes. I'm having the same issues you had. Is that, okay, hopefully that's better. So the Nightlock sensors you spoke about, did I hear you correct that the only places that have sensors are bathrooms and locker rooms?
Yes.
Why not classrooms?
Because those are common areas where multiple people are, tend to be. And so we don't tend to have a student or two students in a classroom by themselves. If they were to be in that situation, it would tend to be in an emergency where there's multiple people around them, and we would be locking down because of that purpose. And so everyone would know where, we may have situations where kids are not making the best choices, and they say, um, there was a TikTok trend of ripping sinks off the walls, which we luckily did not have to deal with. But someone could engage a Nightlock in the bathroom to do some nefarious behaviors, and that way, we're alerted to that and we're able to see, we're in a classroom, there's windows on the doors, and there's ways to see into the classrooms.
Okay. I guess I'm just a little taken aback by it, considering, you know, kids pull fire alarms too, but that doesn't mean we just take fire alarms out, you know, of certain areas because they're high traffic or whatever, so. Just concern- So just concerning, I guess, from my point of view.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and that concludes the superintendent update.
Thank you, everybody. Onto item six, Board of Education Matters, going into committees. I can speak to safety a little bit. And Dr. Williman, you were there too. I think one of the biggest takeaways for me is the, the focus on collaborating between the District Safety Committee and the Parent Safety Committee. We are actually going to have a follow-on Zoom where we can engage from the follow-on that the District Safety Committee had with the Parent Safety Committee. We want to have a closer relationship and communication about some of the activities, the discussions, the safety points. I'm not going to go into all of what Dr. Williman led. It was quite a busy safety committee meeting that we had, very engaging, a lot of discussion, which I think is exactly what we want to have. And I'm excited to hear back on, on the Parent Safety Committee feedback, and then we can continue that dialogue. I don't know, Dr. Williman Milligan, if there's anything, or Dr. Williman, if there's anything I missed that's worth noting? No? You don't have to, I was just asking. We do, okay.
I just think, ooh, that's, I'm going to keep it back here like Stephanie did. I just think that's such an important piece of that committee, and I appreciate you bringing that to light because what we were discussing is what I shared in the summer and as, just throughout different committees of bringing community training. And so that was part of our discussion is when, how, what does that look like? And it's been great to have that type of discussion in an environment where we have not only district personnel, board members, but first responders, various people from grade levels, many people in this room serve on that committee as well. So being able to have that honest dialogue and talk about things that are important for this community to be part of, but also how tough some of these conversations could be. So I appreciate you highlighting that discussion and ready to have our, our Zoom because we have good feedback from the parents as well that line up with what we talked about during the District Safety Committee.
Fantastic, thank you. I think that was good, good, good stuff. From a policy committee perspective, I happened to also participate in that one. So from, from the thirty-thousand-foot view, most of the updates to the policies were options from a legal wording and updating clarification perspective. I think we got great feedback from the admin team that was there. That's, we didn't want to have redundancy or confusion. So where applicable, we accepted the options, and where it wasn't, we didn't. And we, we kept with the original policy. We did have a few that we pushed out. We are looking for legal response just to help guide us in selection of those options and wordage as to make sure that we're doing the best we can for the, for the district and for clarity. I don't know, Tony, if there's anything that I, I missed or as of note that? Good? Okay. And as early stated in the meeting, we have added the government relations to this section. Go ahead, Ann.
Real quick, we had a Government Relations Committee meeting at the county level this past Wednesday. They had a presentation from a group that's called Fund My Future and a ballot initiative that's coming up, and you'll probably see it on the ballot. They're looking to get it on. It's called Invest in My Kids, M-I-Kids. Their website is the same name, investinmykids.org. Interesting information. I just want to encourage folks to be aware of, of the, the different ballot initiatives that are going around and to really educate yourself. And the folks that are, that are putting this one forward, very passionate about it. One of them presenting it is Charlie Cavell. He's one of the county commissioners for District Nineteen for Oakland County. They, they want to talk to people. So I really, if you have questions about it, look into it. Just make yourselves educated on the topic because it sounds like there's going to be a lot of things coming out for November. So I wanted to bring that forward. And the legislative update from the Lisa Hanskrit was not very positive just in terms of there's still not a budget resolution, budget resolution for the state and encouraging boards and local parents and, and school employees and, and admin to really call your congressman, get involved because they, they couldn't encourage that enough. So they're, the, the information that I forwarded to the board had more toolkits for bringing, you know, possible resolutions to light. So if there's an interest there, I'm happy to, to take that up and just wanted to bring that forward. So thanks.
All right, thank you for adding that. All righty, so moving on to field trip first readings. We have the High School Theater, Ms. Krista Price.
Good evening. I'm Krista Price. Thank you. I'm Krista Price, Director of the Theater Program at the high school. Hopefully, most of you have been to shows at the high school. I'm, I'm here to present today about our Fall Play Retreat and share a little bit about the event in hopes that we can get that approved and get it planned for our cast. So the Fall Play is a key event for our community and our students every year. However, we always have a tight schedule in the fall. This fall is even worse than normal. We have a month less for produce or show this fall. So we are looking to add in some of that time, time back into our schedule through this retreat. So the goal is to create more time for rehearsal and student growth that just isn't in the calendar. And the purpose of the retreat, it's really a work-play event, allowing cast, community building, as well as extra needed rehearsal time away from the distractions of the school setting. This would be our third year hosting this event. Here's a few pictures from the production that we produced after our first time up at the camp. This was our Fall Play back in twenty-twenty-three. So just showing you some of the type of work that these students are able to create and that we create at Oxford High School. We're really proud of our productions. This was Peter and the Starcatcher in twenty-twenty-three. And then last year, we produced These Shining Lives in the fall of twenty-twenty-four. And here's a few photos from that production as well. So these students work really, really hard. And like I said, there isn't always the time in the calendar for what we need to really grow these young actors into where we want to be so that they are really proud of their work. And we try to make that up in other ways and get creative. So the goals for the retreat are to participate in community building and cast-in-character or show-related exercises that are designed to create a cohesive cast for our ensemble-driven Fall Play. So the, the play is usually a smaller cast than the musical. So very ensemble-driven, and this type of event really helps to build a cohesive team. The second goal is to provide the cast and show with dedicated and intense supplemental rehearsal time due to our shortened schedule. Like I said, we're a month earlier this year, so it really helps out with that. And then finally, to provide a distraction-free, out-of-school and inspiring setting in which students can fully commit to self-growth, team cohesion, and the rehearsal and show excellence. So that is our, our goal there. I have a few quotations and some additional pictures from when we're actually up at the camp. So this is a rehearsal in the, and there's kind of a community lodge in the lodge. And a quote from Heidi Allen, who graduated already, but what she shared about her experience at the retreat. This is our tech and sound design team working again up at the camp on some aspects of the show. And a quote from Cole Dietrich about his experience. And he went the past two years as well. And then this is a quote from Jack Steiger. He is actually going on this year's trip and has been on the last two as well. And just kind of sharing what this has meant for him. This picture is in the lodge, it's with a guest artist, and I hope to have two, or I have scheduled potentially two guest artists that will be joining us this year as well so that kids are not only learning from me, but also from other professionals. It's a great experience for that. And then finally, a quotation from another one of our cast members. You can see we have beautiful setting, inspiring setting to be able to do our work. A few more pictures, some of our chaperones and cast, some of the activities that we do, competition and community building activities, of course, campfires, you know, all the typical stuff. So it's a great experience. We actually do rehearsal when we're up there. This happens to be one of our outdoor rehearsals for These Shining Lives. And then this happens to be, we took the cast to Lake Michigan last year because that was one of the themes in the show last year. So we have a lot of show-related themes, and even Bean got in on some of the fun. So as far as like some of the logistics, staff and students and transportation, we have twelve cast members and a student stage manager, so thirteen students altogether. Five to six adults, at least three are staff members. We're kind of finalizing some of that. And then our transportation is chaperone-driven vehicles. The location is called Northern Pines Lakeside Resort. It's in Irons, Michigan. There's six cabins and a lodge for our gatherings and rehearsal and community times. And the cost is listed there, the dates as well. The dates are coming up soon, so I was told to mention a vote might be needed sooner rather than later since everything is shoved a little bit earlier this year. So that's what we're looking at doing, and thank you so much for, for taking the time to allow me to present.
Just real quick, and Krista, thank you for that. Can you just quickly speak to the challenge of, reason why we have to vote on it tonight is there was a challenge scheduling this? Can you speak to that?
Yeah, so, so we had auditions, like, you know, we had the first two days of school, that Thursday, Friday, and then we had auditions the next week. So had I presented before that, I wouldn't even be able to tell you, you know, how many are in the cast and all that kind of stuff. So it's just having to be shoved a little bit earlier as well as, you know, marching band is very busy in the fall. We have a lot of crossover between our programs. So not wanting to be on any home game weekend or any band competition weekend, we're kind of left with literally one weekend, and that is September, the weekend of September nineteen. So I apologize that it worked out that way this year, so thank you.
Thanks, Krista. Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Do you have anybody who, a recommendation for action on this one? Take the lead on that one?
Yeah.
James?
But I thought there was, there's other ones to go with the action, so.
Well, I know, we're, we want to wait till all of them?
What's listed under approvals for D?
Okay.
The other ones are first readings.
Never mind that.
We'll, we'll do that and then we'll do E and.
Fair enough.
Yeah, there's no other presentations.
Okay.
It's the only presentation we have. The others are first readings.
BPA, States, Nationals, the Speech Wire, okay? Field trip approvals in Section D, Ford Theater, Disney, and Mackinaw. Anyone take the reading on that?
So, hold up, i- is this a approval of the first reading for those? Or are we moving to the, the?
Yeah.
Sweet, now be quiet.
Move to approve the OHS Theater, OHS Disney, and OMS Mackinaw Field Trips as presented.
Support?
I second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed, it's a good job. And then the Clear Lake bid for word approval. Anyone like to read that?
Yep, I'll take it. Move to approve the, oh, wait, hold on. Move to approve the, what is? I'm looking at the Boiler.
E.
But that's Boiler, yeah.
So we're onto the next one.
Never, never mind. I'm, I'm new glasses, trying to adjust here, so bear with me. So move to approve the Boiler bid for Clear Lake as presented.
Support? Ann, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, passes, good job. On to number seven, teaching and learning.
All right, good evening. I have the pleasure of providing a fun highlight and overview of our offerings from the summer. It's always hard for people to believe that school is not over for everyone during the summer, and the number of staff that we actually have working over the summer is also pretty amazing. So this is a nice opportunity to shed light about what is happening over the summer for our students and across our buildings. So again, the purpose of this presentation is to provide a high overview of summer learning and engagement opportunities. We differentiate summer learning with actual academic experiences that are usually invitational-based or credit recovery is needed. And summer engagement is referred to anything we're doing to help kids stay engaged in keeping the love of learning alive, whether that's through games or literacy or some STEM as Mrs. Neme shared. So again, the purpose of summer learning and engagement is for the engagement aspect, to keep the love of learning alive, keep connected with our students and families. And actually, at a lot of our summer engagement opportunities, our teachers and our paras that support the summer engagement really provide parents with some tools that they can use at home as well. They'll have, they'll give books or games that they can take home. This is in alignment with our strategic plan, again, growing knowledgeable, critical thinkers and communicators. So we aim to prepare students to remain knowledgeable and to retain their skills over the summer. And we want to always meet the needs of our students. So the kids that are invited to summer school, they're usually identified through our early warning system, students who are showing needs across reading, writing, also social-emotional support. And our goal is to keep their skills where they are and avoid the summer slide, which could even be a bigger gap for students who are at risk. Also, we offer credit recovery for our high school students across the district and enrichment opportunities. So some students actually take classes in the summer to earn credit so that they can have a different load during the school year. So just summer learning numbers. Twelve thousand four hundred ninety-one meals were served, breakfast and lunch meals by Patty and her team. And I'll break that down by breakfast and lunch on that slide. Over nine hundred fifty students were supported, and I, I left that as a range because some kids did more than one. So they participated in GRASP, and they also came to summer engagement. So I tried to remove the duplicates. Two hundred four courses were taken at the high school level. That's across the high school, Bridges, and OVA. And ninety-nine credits were recovered and earned this summer. And just look at their faces. They look best. Both of those are actually from Clear Lake, and it was pretty amazing because kids were able to take books home too. So the summer feeding program broken down for, or four thousand eight hundred fifty-one breakfast meals, seven thousand six hundred forty meals. The main summer feeding program operates out of OES for the district, but Patty and her team are able to support summer school by running the kitchen during summer school days in times and supporting at Lakeville and at OMS. And she sent me this picture, so I wanted to make sure I highlight it because it's awesome. We actually had an auditor, an MDE analyst come out during the summer, and the auditor took this picture and highlighted on the state's Facebook page just showing so much pride in how our food service presents the food. So nice job. New this year in a partnership with North Oakland Community Coalition, or NOCC, we offered a camp, the Level Up Camp, to incoming sixth graders to OMS. They had a hundred seats available and they filled ninety-eight of them. And it was a tuition base, but if students stayed all the way through, they had an opportunity to earn, to get their money back. So that's the way that they solicit ownership from the families. Many of the families actually choose to donate it back to NOCC. We had twelve OHS student mentors, many of them are NHS students. They really work on team building. So again, to piggyback on what Stephanie Neme was saying about having the kindergarteners come in, this is equally important for our older kids too. So for the sixth graders to be able to walk the hall, where's the art room? Where's the commons area? Where are those high-frequently-used spaces? They practice the lockers ahead of time. That's a point of anxiety for kids. They redid some lessons around vaping and healthy lungs. We know statistically that this is a time in students' lives where this vaping really comes into. comes into play. They talked about healthy influences, stress management, and listening skills. And then what was really neat, because I received them, too, is after each day, the parents all received a newsletter. So if your child was there, there was a review of what they did, lots of amazing pictures so they can see their kids in action. And then there was like, ask your kids this. So it gave them skills and questions that they can engage their kids in afterwards. So this was a successful partnership. We'll be continuing that next summer. We also offer the GRASP, which is the Grand Rapids Academic Summer Program. It's a correspondence or online option, and by correspondence, that means they send you a lesson, you do it, you send it back, they grade it, and send you the next one in the mail. Some kids really like getting mail still, so that's kind of cool. We had 195 kids across the district participate in that, and we really reduce the cost for families through grants. It's 38, $36 or $38 a subject, and we use grants to make that only $10 for families. OELC Summer Care supported 172 students, infant through age 12. And here are some highlights that they had over the summer. So they had a hot air balloon visit come out. My son is there, so it's like amazing to see. I know Ann's daughter is there. The Painted Pot came out and did some pottery with the kids, a team-building competition, leader dog. They also did a walk to support leader dogs around the track. The high school robotics team goes to OELC and works with the students. And so again, that connected community piece is there. And then they partner with the Oxford Library, and that was always something my son came home and talked about because they got to read a story on the lawn. So he loved that. For summer engagement, again, this is a more casual experience for students. We had engaged 177 students in this across the schools, keeping the love of learning alive. And you can see pictures from various schools. So this is where teachers and paras are doing some read-alouts. They, this year, it was interesting because a couple of schools not only did book clubs, but they also engaged kids in book clubs in a series. So that means there are multiple books, and so they read the first one with the kids, and then the kids were able to take the next one home to continue reading over the summer. They played math games that focused on number sense, fact fluency, basic skills. And some schools operate where kids can come in, check out books, and come back. So they come in and read a story, check out books, and exchange them. And a couple of schools, including Clear Lake, tried doing some STEM activities this year. This is all also funded through a grant. At Lakeville, we hosted our elementary-seated summer school. This is an invitational summer school based on student data. So we literally, not we, Christine Russell, our MTSS coordinator, pulls every student's data across the district and the elementary school, and they, all of the first graders, all of the second graders, all the third graders are grouped together, and we rate the need, and we invite based on who has the most urgent need, and then we kind of work in like blocks, and we go from there. And so 142 students participated in this. We have about 30 staff members who helped to support that, whether that's a classroom teacher, a para, a supervisor, FSL. It's all hands on deck in the summer. The emphasis is on literacy, math, and social, emotional learning. And again, the goal is maintaining current skills and levels. General education students, and we offer specialized instruction. So there are students there who were working on some IEP goals, or maybe they didn't meet goals and were there for extended school year. And so it, it was very full and fun there. It's always fun to visit. Elementary virtual summer school, also invitational. They serviced 43 students, and this year had a specific emphasis on the English learners and improving English proficiency. Had four staff members facilitating that, and again, an emphasis on literacy and math. And they actually did a little bit of writing instruction, too. Middle school seated summer school, also invitational. It shows that 30 students attended, probably around 75 were invited. This is an area of growth for us. Middle school is really rough to say, can you come back to school in the summer? So we're going to keep working on that. But the team there this year worked so hard to make sure the kids that were signed up were coming. I mean, relentless calling, going to a couple of homes to be like, we really need you to come, and really turn some things around for some kids, which was pretty amazing. They had six staff members. Again, they do a diagnostic where they assess the kids in the spring before they end the school year, and then they use that diagnostic to help plan the curriculum for the kids in the summer. And then they had another teacher come on and plan minute-to-minute for all the kids on the last day to work on collaboration and team building, and again, supporting general education students and students who need specialized instruction. High school credit recovery and enrichment, 204 courses taken, 198 courses completed. Each course is a half a credit, that's why it's only 99. And then we had students who did credit recovery. That means they may have failed a class and needed to recover that credit. And we had kids that also participated in enrichment who were like, I can do this class online in the summer and free up an elective or another course during the school year. That's it. I'm really proud of our team. We cannot do this without staff who's really dedicated to being there when it's their summer, too. And so to be able to service over 950 kids makes me really proud.
Fantastic. Anybody? Any thoughts? No? If, if I may?
Yes.
Awesome. I think the, the word that just kept hitting me is impactful. And I think we owe it to all of you who have done this to put it out on social and to, to promote the fact of how much you've touched our community and our kids throughout the summer. And for the most part, to what you said, this is the summer, so it's even harder to do it, and look what you were able to achieve. I think this is something that we need to, to promote, and great job, in my opinion.
I'll say thank you, but it's a selfish thank you because it's really not me. It's everybody else who makes it happen.
Speaking to the voice for everyone.
Yeah.
To all those involved, congratulations and great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Safety and School Operations.
Hi, I'm, ooh, I keep doing that because I, oh, yes, it's got to be close here. It can be way down here. So I am here to bring for you the Second Semester School of Choice. Vote, or today it's the presentation, next meeting you will vote. And what we are bringing to you is for Second Semester kindergarten through fifth grade, unlimited seating, and the school of choice enrollment will open November 3 and close November 20 for seated students. For OMS, sixth through eighth grade, and OHS, ninth grade, unlimited seated, school of choice enrollment will open December 1 and close December 18 for seated. And then for Oxford Virtual Academy, from kindergarten through 11th grade, virtual, school of choice enrollment will open December 1 and close December 18 for virtual. Any questions?
Is there a reason that 12th grade isn't involved? You said K through to 11.
For virtual?
Yeah.
It typically would be difficult in your senior year, second semester, to transition over to virtual and then meeting the graduation requirements, if I'm correct, Janet and Jordan. Okay, I just want to.
Makes sense. I'm just asking.
Yes, that's why.
Okay. Anybody else with questions, thoughts? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody unscheduled? I'm going to say that's a zero. Great job on that, by the way. I like the hand gestures. Scheduled activities coming up? I think the only one I would note here is Student Count Day, October 1. Any administration clarification, Dr. Milligan?
None.
None, yeah. Final Board comments? Fellow Board members, anything? No? I guess at this point, it is 8:22. Fellow member is, Board of Meeting is adjourned.